Advised by the town clerk that we have a quorum, please take your seats. I declare that a quorum is present and call to order the second session of the Fall Town Meeting. The first thing we're going to do is test our handheld electronic voting devices. Thank you. And we will have a test vote, no acute resolutions this evening. So, the purpose is simply to make sure that your devices are operating properly. We'll start the timing and scroll through twice, scroll through the lists. And we've made one adjustment, we've gone from five to six seconds and it seems like a long time, but I think it will make it easier for you to spot your names up there and make sure that your vote has been properly recorded. So, you can start the timing anytime. And you can press, I remind you that you're pressing the buttons numbered one, two, and three. You can press anyone you wish. I think it would be helpful if you'd be quiet while this drama is unfolding. Does anyone have any difficulty with his or her handheld device, Mr. Vitolo?
Mr. Robert, we need an experiment.
Well, come to the microphone if you have a question.
Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. Myself and two other gentlemen tried to change our votes at three seconds, two seconds, and one second, and none of them were changed.
Well, it takes about three seconds for your vote to be recorded, so you'd be well advised to not change your vote within the last three seconds of the time cycle. Mr. Spiegel?
Stanley Spiegel from Precinct Two. Would there be a possibility of having, because there are fifteen in each column, having each precinct have its own column and then have the at-large people be, you know, rather than have it split up? Because some precincts are split up between two different screens.
Yeah, I understand the issue and we'll work on it for the next town meeting.
Fifteen works very well.
Not, it won't occur this town meeting, but Mr. Schmizik?
Yes, I mind didn't.
Who are you, sir?
I'm Frank Schmizik, Precinct Nine.
I thought you were.
Thank you. I'm at large, too, yes. Mine didn't register and are we going to do another test so we can see?
No. Come up and see my voting coordinator on the stage and get your device checked out and get another one if it's not working. Mr. Banka?
Yes, Dick Banka, Board of Selectmen. We had a discussion, Mr. Moderator, yesterday about standing or not standing for the vote. And I know this is not a change we could make at this town meeting, but one of the reasons that I think standing was somewhat ineffective is that it was such a short period of time to get within the forty seconds. And it was sort of like the whack-a-mole game. We were up and then down right away in order to get the yeses, the nos, and the abstains. And I know that you want to move this along quickly, but I would just suggest the possibility of extending the time from forty seconds, which might allow people to stand for a longer period of time and without significantly affecting the process.
Well, Mr. Banka, this forty-second voting period has been very carefully considered and worked out, and I trust my fellow town meeting members to be able to make up their minds within forty seconds. So I think I'd like to leave that voting interval as it is. Okay, I think we're ready for, ready to proceed with the articles. You recall that we disposed of Articles Ten and Eleven last night, and we will start with Article Nine. The motion under Article Nine is found on Page Three of the Brown Supplement. It is, in fact, the motion of the petitioners, even though it appears in the report of the Advisory Committee. It's moved by Mr. Richmond and seconded by Ms. Humphrey that the town amend the general bylaws by adding an article relating to plastic bag reduction. And the motion goes over to the middle of Page Five.
Good evening. My name is Clint Richmond, Precinct Six. I'm representing the Green Caucus who adopted this orphan article. I didn't write it. We didn't write it. We discussed this topic for a while, over a year. This article is based on Mass. Senate Bill 2314. Similar bills have been attempted since 2009. All versions have been supported by the Sierra Club of Massachusetts, among other environmental organizations. This year, the bill progressed, passed the Joint Committee on the Environment, but was not acted upon by Ways and Means. One of the reasons this bill failed is because of opposition from certain vested business interests, such as the American Chemistry Council and the American Plastic Bag Alliance. These national organizations have opposed restrictions wherever they have been attempted. So this Brookline Warren article is simply an attempt to apply this law at the local level, and we hope it will inspire similar action across the state. So what we're asking you to do this evening is, I like to think of it as part two of the theme of this Fall Town Meeting, which is banning large-volume problematic plastic packaging which has abnormal risks and, at the same time, ready substitutes. I'll give you a little technical background on what's covered or not in this article, so I'd like to cue Mr. Vander Zee to bring up the slides. Number one, please. That's not the right slide. Number one. Thank you. So we've divided, just for simplicity, divided the world of bags into shopping bags and other bags. Within shopping bags, we have single-use bags and reusable bags. The yellow rectangle for plastic bags is sort of the warning symbol, and as you'll see on the next slide, those are the ones we're going to be talking about. All the others are not affected by this article. So if we go to the second one. Thank you. So we've divided plastic shopping bags into two types: traditional polyethylene bags and biodegradable bags, as defined in this article, using strict ASTM national standards, 6400 and 7081, as you see. So it's the block in red, the polyethylene bags, that would be affected by this. No other bags are affected, nor are they recommended beyond a definition of biodegradable So, how many bags are we talking about in that little rectangle? The United States government, surveying the industry, has determined that there are over a hundred billion bags per year used in the United States. Plastic bags were invented in 1965, so we've already had trillions of bags. They all still exist unless they've been incinerated. They do not biodegrade. Brookline's share of that would be twenty million bags per year. The number works out to about one bag per person per day. Plastic bags are not made from a renewable material, so in the long run, they are not sustainable. And what we're looking for is to put Brookline on a sustainable path, as with Article Eight. Most plastic bags in the United States are made from natural gas. So a vote for a plastic bag in today's world is a vote for hydro-fracking. It's hydro-fracking that's keeping natural gas cheap and plastic bags cheap and providing the margin for stores to give them away for free. We consider this an unfair advantage. There are a couple other unique dangers of plastic bags. First of all, they can suffocate children. Every plastic bag carries this warning on it, in fact. If we go to the next slide, we can start to see some of the unique hazards of plastic bags. These would be the images. Could you scroll to the first one, Mark? I think you want the left arrow. Keep going. Here we go. The first problem that's unique to plastic bags, because of their light aerodynamic quality, the bags, the HDP bags we're talking about, are very thin and they can float away. You might recognize the location of the picture in the upper right corner. It's our own town hall, that's a CVS bag. In the lower left corner, you can see a Stop &amp; Shop bag next door to my home. It's mixing in with the yard waste, which is a risk, but certainly not enough to ban plastic bags by themselves. It'll contaminate the yard waste. It'll contaminate the yard waste, but it can still be processed. I didn't have any trouble finding images, and you may see some more later. Next slide, please. These bags affect many aspects of our natural environment, such as land animals. There's a cow munching on a plastic bag. I don't think he's attracted to the plastic bag, but animals have no knowledge of this particulate material. And the bag is entangled with some foliage that I assume the cow is really interested in. However, this bag can go into its stomach, often with fatal results if you consume enough of it, and it's very difficult to be eliminated. On the lower left, you'll see an image of a otter, a playful pup that perhaps got caught in a plastic bag. I can tell you this otter escaped, but many animals are not so fortunate. Next slide. See, in the upper left corner, a heron type bird. Its bill has poked through a plastic bag, and I'm not sure how that bird will escape itself. On the lower right, it's a picture of a hawk. It's a young hawk. Its foot, its claw, has caught on a plastic bag that has, I assume, been part of the nesting material, perhaps it has some food waste in it, and it was brought back to the nest. That hawk, I can tell you, just escaped itself. That was a video camera in New York City, so there's a lot of people lost. Next slide. See how various things in the sea, like coral, capture the plastic bag. But it's the lower two that are really the most concerning. That's a sea turtle that might have perhaps mistaken a plastic bag for a jellyfish. Again, they don't have any knowledge of these materials, they have no defenses against them, and of course, no way to get rid of it once they fall. They can be strangled, they can fill their stomachs with plastic waste, and it's not a pretty place. Next slide, final slide. This slide is a little difficult to read, but people are asking, "Well, why are you focusing on the polyethylene plastic bag?" So here's a rubric with seven categories for ranking bags. And according to this rubric, if you look in the lower, the bottom row on the left, polyethylene plastic bags have been assigned a score of 0.5 out of seven. What we're proposing in this article is to eliminate the worst of the optimum. We're not saying that the other bags are perfect, and you can see, for example, the biodegradable bags are the next worst choice, but they are made of a sustainable material. And that's the path, as I say, we want to put ourselves on at this town meeting if we want. So basically, that's the summary of my talk. If you can understand the seven categories, I'll read them to you quickly. Renewable material, biodegradable, durability is a plus, so we, I think we all encourage reusable bags, a recycling program that works. Notice that polyethylene bags don't get a full credit because the recycling rate is very low, and it's not closed, the bag cannot turn into bag. Highlights Poly, which is a large plastic bag manufacturing in the United States, has one plant out of about a dozen that's processing recycled material, but it's not typically from post-consumer, dirty post-consumer shopping bags and LDE and HPE, and it only can get up to thirty percent, thirty-five percent recycled content. So I would say that the recycling of polyethylene is the only thing it has going for it, it's not very successful. And as you said, I've already mentioned, the suffocation hazard, the litter problem, and the animal hazard. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit more about the danger to our oceans. You saw those marine animals. You say, "Well, how do those get there? Is Brookline really a coastal community? Should we be concerned about that?" The answer is yes, because all of our storm drains drain into the Charles River directly or the Muddy River, and from there, they go into the sea. And that's true of nearly all communities in the United States, almost, you know, the middle of the desert, mountain, something like that. Eventually, it's the lowest point. All bags, if they survive their journey, somebody may have seen the movie link I sent around today, will wend their way to the ocean and cause this hazard. And because they're not biodegradable, they persist and are a constant threat. Some cases, the bags are then called a serial killer, because, you know, if an animal does manage to eliminate or if it dies, the bag might float back up to the surface and entrap or ensnare yet another tree.
Now, Mr. Richmond, you've been ten and a half minutes, and I'll give you one more minute because of your difficulties with the slides. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. The last thing I want to say about the marine environment is that these bags will deteriorate into micro particles. This plankton will be absorbed, clams, the whales, and get into our food systems as well. But in conclusion, I would like to ask you to join with your Board of Selectmen, with the Advisory Committee, with Brookline PAC, with the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association, with the Green Caucus, with our own representative Frank Schmizik, who's one of the sponsors of this bill, and vote yes on this article, and ban plastic bags from Brookline forever and put us on a sustainable path. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dick Banka, for a minority of the Board of Selectmen. You've heard and read the primary goals of Article Nine, which are to reduce litter and thus to reduce the adverse impacts on marine life. We all agree with those goals, but we also have to ask, is this a real problem in Brookline? Does Article Nine actually address the problem? And would Article Nine create unintended consequences? As I address these questions, I will not use any data from the chemical or plastic bag industry. First, is there any evidence that Brookline, that is there any data or any evidence that Brookline supermarkets or plastic bags actually end up in the ocean? We are not a community where indiscriminate disposal of trash is endemic. We are also not Revere or Nantucket with oceanfront activity. Our storm drains, in fact, do not drain directly to the Charles River. They do drain into the Muddy River. And any debris that might be in the Muddy River is first screened, and then floating debris is trapped by the culvert design before it even gets to the Charles River, much less the ocean. But more fundamentally, even if you can hypothesize how a bag or two from Brookline might somehow become ocean litter, Article Nine has it exactly backwards. Article Nine does nothing to attack the likeliest litter sources: sandwich shops, takeout restaurants, and convenience stores. To the contrary, Article Nine bans use by supermarkets, where bags have the greatest utility to our citizens and the most responsible usage. Their use is to bring groceries home, with the bags ending up in the kitchen, not tossed away as litter. Article Nine has it backwards in another way. It punishes those who are recycling. Stores under 2,500 square feet, the likeliest litter producer, the convenience stores and so forth, do not have to offer recycling, but can continue to distribute plastic bags under Article Nine, while supermarkets, the stores that now offer recycling to their customers, will be banned. What actually happens to plastic bags? Studies show that sixty to seventy-six percent of the bags are actually repurposed, that is reused, as trash bags, kitty litter, as bathroom waste can liners and so on. These bags are clearly not flying around as litter. Moreover, if existing bags become unavailable for these purposes, it would encourage the purchase of new bags made from virgin petroleum resources. As to bags that are currently not reused in this way, Brookline supermarkets now recycle not only their own bags, but also bags from other merchants, from the farmer's market, the bag that the Globe is delivering in, or for those of you over there that herald in the Wall Street Journal. Article Nine would almost certainly end this practice. Supermarkets would be foolish to recycle bags from other retailers for a measly $12 a ton, particularly where the bags would now have to be picked over by hand, because bags from other retailers don't have to be recyclable, and the new so-called compostable bags would be treated as contaminants. One result of all this is that bags that are currently recycled would be forced into the solid waste stream. And another result is that bags now produced from recycled plastic, like plastic lumber and decking, would have to be made from virgin petroleum resources. Our own Solid Waste Advisory Committee recommends no action on Article Nine, noting that, quote, "Producers offer a convenient and free way for consumers to recycle." But let's turn to the specific unintended consequences of the two alternatives allowed by Article Nine: so-called compostable plastic bags and paper bags. First, as to the so-called compostable bags, the National Technical Standard for these bags requires that when they break down, sixty to ninety percent of their weight has to be converted to carbon dioxide, a greenhouse gas. Moreover, the introduction of so-called compostable bags could impair the town's existing recycling efforts. The compostable designation is, in fact, misleading. Those bags would actually be a contaminant for Brookline yard waste. The result? Well-intentioned disposal of yard waste could force substantial quantities of that yard waste to be diverted into the solid waste stream for incineration. The more immediate substitute for plastic bags will likely be paper. Considering the paper bag versus plastic bag issue, no less an authority than the National Resources Defense Council has said, quote, "It all depends on where you live." Go with paper if there's a real impact on coastal litter, but otherwise, the NRDC recognizes the significant adverse impact of paper bags. There are recycled paper bags and there are tree plantations, but Article Nine does not require recycled paper bags, nor does it require paper bags from any particular source. And virgin fiber has more strength than recycled fiber. Moreover, the NRDC points out that plantations have ninety percent fewer species than the forests that congregate. The NRDC has looked at the boreal forest destruction actually caused by the paper industry, from toilet paper to paper bags. Based on the NRDC's analysis of paper bags, if we substituted just one bag for every two plastic bags affected by Article Nine, it would be equivalent to cutting down thirteen thousand trees. Put that in perspective, Brookline has eleven thousand street trees. Article Nine would thus be equivalent, according to the NRDC's figure, to destroying all of our street trees every ten months, year after year after year. Finally, let's talk about paper bags, pollutants, and greenhouse gases. Paper bag production, including recycled paper production, uses significant quantities of chemicals, water, and energy. To give some idea of the magnitude, according to UNESCO, just one sheet of copy paper, one sheet, uses two to thirteen liters of water, and if it's not recovered paper, four to nineteen liters of water. Paper production creates air and water pollution, including dioxins and furans, among the most toxic substances known. Tests by Environment Canada and others have shown reproductive impairment and genetic damage in zoo plankton, invertebrates, shellfish, and fish. Moreover, because of their energy-intensive production methods and much greater weight involved for transport, paper bags create significant quantities of greenhouse gases over their life cycle. In fact, the very composting of paper bags creates carbon dioxide. According to the British Environmental Administration, paper bags release three to four times the carbon dioxide of plastic bags over their life cycle. The proponents' response, and their facts, is that, quote, "Article Nine cannot be about reducing our carbon footprint. It has been also argued that we are, quote, 'citizens of the world.'" Well, indeed, we are, and in this world, water is a precious resource, chemical pollution is real, greenhouse gases are real, global warming is real, and climate change is real. More real, I personally believe, than the purely hypothetical impact of Brookline supermarkets and pharmacy bags on ocean wildlife. Therefore, I believe Article Nine is misguided. But at the very least, the issues are serious and significant, and are probably not best resolved in a forty-minute debate in a town meeting. I recognize the sincerity and passion of the proponents, but ask yourselves whether Article Nine adequately considers all environmental impacts. At a minimum, Article Nine could appropriately be referred for more thoughtful consideration of its costs and benefits, and whether alternative approaches would be better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Humphrey.
Ms. Humphrey, Precinct Six, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. I will not repeat the many tales that we just heard about the impact of polyethylene bags on our environment, as well as the impact on our environment for the resources needed to make them. The article impacts, among others, our supermarkets here in Brookline, retail pharmacies, and also our beloved Brookline dog smell. Currently, most establishments in Brookline are very sensitive to environmental concerns, and the use of reusable bags has become quite common. During our hearings, it was wonderful to listen to the manager of our local Stop &amp; Shop and how he has promoted many energy-efficient practices that include recycling, composting, and, for example, LED lights. The Massachusetts Food Association during our hearings pointed out that it will be four times more expensive to use paper instead of plastic, and that the transportation of paper bags requires seven more times the energy. But as much as has been done to date by all of us in Brookline, and that includes all of our merchants, we need to see what else can be done to eliminate the continued damage to our environment. There are many readily available substitutes. It is unlikely that twenty million bags, plastic bags, will be replaced in Brookline by twenty million paper bags. It will be very easy to expand the use of shopping bags that are made out of cloth, nylon, or recycled materials. If no plastic bags are available at stores, we, as citizens, have a year to train ourselves to learn to bring in our own. Paper bags, as was pointed out by our selectmen, are made from renewable resources, and they will continue to exist. Currently, concerns have increased that the paper-producing companies are selling off responsibly forested woodlands, and that selling of that land may cause potential harm to very fragile ecosystems, because the trees are important. Plastic bags are a fairly new invention. They cause tremendous harm to our environment. In the past, we brought our food home without plastic bags, and I'm sure that we will be able to learn to do so again in the future. The Advisory Committee supports Article Nine as amended with a start date of December 2013 with a fifteen, six, and one of them revoked. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And several town meeting members. I'm an engineer or a scientist.
Who are you?
I'm Julie Levine. A humble lawyer. And a town meeting member from Precinct Nine. But I have read carefully the reports of the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee, and it seems to me they boil down to one choice that we have to make in our vote on Article Nine. Do we choose paper bags if we vote in favor, or does our vote again mean plastic bags can continue? I understand that, because it is apparently agreed on both sides of the tables of me that Brookline cannot create biodegradable, compostable, plastic bags.
We hate it too. And so the choice is stark. There is one other possible kind of bag, the reusable bag, but that hasn't been used much. It's been available a long time. Bacteria can grow in the bottom, and it's not a large factor. It's really a choice between plastic and paper. Which do we prefer? We all have our reasons. I prefer plastic, because plastic bags have high five-inch handles. When I have my both hands occupied, holding my walker, I can slip the handle on my wrist. And if I want to be a little risky, I can put it in my fist without slipping it all the way up. It's much lighter than a paper bag, and the paper bags that I've seen primarily don't have handles at all. And those that have handles have very short handles, and they tear very easily. And in addition to my own interest, there are certain advantages that everyone finds from plastic bags. One, they're water-resistant. Have you, as I have, carried a paper bag with something, maybe ice cream frozen in it, and it makes the bag give way, and the glass jar breaks? What a mess. Plastic bags are water-resistant. And they are also collapsible. You can roll it up, put it in your pocket, and then use it later when you find something to carry with you. You can't do that with a paper bag. And you can seal a plastic bag. You tie a nice knot with those long handles. Can't do that with a paper bag. Most have no handles, and those that have handles have very short handles, and they tear very easily. It is a very strong, durable bag. Believe it or not, I had a nineteen-hundred-page law book in a plastic bag last week, and it held up. That wouldn't have happened with a paper bag. It's very versatile. Those of you who work woodworking probably use plastic bags to separate out some of your screws and some of your tools. I've seen electricians use them. You might think of how they've been helpful to you. It's been said that even if we went to paper bags, we'd have the advantages of plastic bags, because the produce departments in grocery stores, and the Herald, and the Globe, deliver in plastic bags. But they're open. They have no handle at all. They're only one size. They're not flexible.
Give one minute.
And you can't seal them. So the question is, should we let the great versatility of these bags be sacrificed on the altar of paper bags? And I suggest that our fathers and mothers were right in taking up plastic bags when they became available and jettisoning paper bags. The plastic bags are clearly superior. And if you go the paper bag way, what you do is hurt our carbon footprint. You take space away in our landfills. You charge three cents more, and you make Dr. Bolson's health department have to ask for more resources, as he said last night. It is not an unmixed blessing. The pendulum swings in favor of plastic bags. We could be as environmentally happy as we'd like to be and get rid of them if we could compost the bags. Well, we can't here. We don't have enough heat.
Please conclude, sir.
And that's why we compare fine with the California cities that have had that capacity. Let us not throw out the baby with the bathwater. And if I may invoke an acronym in closing, Mr. Moderator, everything that's PC is not always A-OK.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jessie Mermell, for the majority of the Board of Selectmen, which urges favorable action on the Advisory Committee's amended version of this article. I do want to take a moment to note that this article has been a bit of a moving target since it was filed by a well-intentioned resident who made a few tweaks to the state law, got her signatures from registered voters, and filed before promptly moving out west and leaving this whole thing up in the air. Mr. Fisher and Mr. Richmond are to be commended for drastically cleaning up the article and carrying the ball on this for the duration of the process. We've already heard tonight, and you don't have to be a scientist to see how plastic bags harm the environment. Just look outside, especially on a windy day, or at Mr. Richmond's photos. Rogue bags are constantly getting stuck in trees or blowing down the street. Sources vary on how long these bags take to decompose, but when those estimates fall in the 500 to 1,000-year range, clearly they will be around for a horrifyingly long time. The shift away from plastic bags has been quite evident over the past several years as reusable bags gain in popularity. Signs in the supermarket parking lots ping customers to remember to bring in their shopping bags. Reusable bags are available for sale at nearly every checkout counter, and many stores offer a discount for shoppers who bring their own bag. Reusable bags have even become popular giveaways for organizations looking to hand out branded tchotchkes to supporters. And in countries throughout Europe, bringing your bags to the grocery store has been the norm for decades. It's time for Brookline to get on the bandwagon. As with Article Eight last night, the Board was concerned about implications for businesses. The restrictions that this ban only apply to businesses of certain size limits the impact on very small businesses. The year-long implementation period and optional extension at the discretion of the Health Department ensures that businesses will not lose money by being forced to abandon their current stock of shopping bags. The Board remains concerned about the increased freight costs of shipping heavier paper bags, and strongly encourages the Economic Development Office, the Health Department, and private entities like the Chamber of Commerce to further educate the public on the value of reusable bags as this transition occurs over the coming year. This focus on reusable bags should be both because of the shipping costs, and also because, as we heard from Mr. Richmond, neither bags that are decomposable nor paper bags are perfect alternatives. Banning plastic bags in Brookline is another way for our community to take the lead on issues of environmental health and sustainability. By a vote of three to two, the Board urges favorable action on Article Nine.
My name is Karen Wentz. I'm a precinct eleven town meeting member. Paper or plastic? A blast from the past? No, I was just asked that just this past Friday at a market called Evergood in Cambridge, it's on Mass Ave, between Harvard and Porter Square. It's a really great place, if you've ever heard about it. We really do no longer hear that nearly ubiquitous refrain as we check out at the grocery store. Now it's, would you like a receipt? Article Nine seeks to ban the high-density polyethylene lightweight plastic bags from large retail stores and pharmacies in Brookline, and offer instead paper or compostable plastic bags. First produced in 1977, the bags that have become a way of life have in recent years become an anathema to many. All bags make an impact, but what are these so-called single-use plastic bags, the eco-villains that they are purported to be? Compared to paper, they may actually be less harmful to the environment. Paper bags take four times as much energy to manufacture. Forests are cut down, and trees, of course, are absorbers of greenhouse gases. The manufacture of paper bags is a toxic process, and the chemicals used in the process eventually make their way into the food chain. In a 2005 report by the Scottish government that compared the environmental impact assessment of paper versus plastic bags, paper had four times the water consumption to make them plastic bags, 3.3 times the greenhouse gas emissions, 1.9 times the atmospheric acidification effect, that is acid rain, 2.7 times the solid waste burden, and 14 times the eutropification of bodies of water. And that's when bodies of water begin to accumulate so much mineral and organic matter that they start to lose their biodiversity. If paper is not recycled, it also takes up much more space in the solid waste stream. Although this article refers to plastic bags in current use as single-use, they are anything but. You know, and as a consumer or a customer of a store, the wisest choice, of course, is to use one of these. I mean, use one of these several times for many years, hundreds of times for many years, and this is the best bet environmentally. The next most least harmful environmental option is to use the plastic bags and then reuse them, because that kind of plastic, as well as other plastic, polyethylene, that's used for wrapping up vegetables, produce, the ones that we get, you know, the bags for produce, and for bulk materials that we buy, they all end up in the same solid waste stream. But if you recycle plastic bags, it's a really efficient use of them. And then paper bags are less environmentally, they have a higher environmental impact than plastic. But the thing is to accept plastic only when you absolutely need them. Now, this is not only an environmental problem or an issue, this article, but also solid waste issue. And the problem that I have with this article is that the so-called, or the compostable bags do not conform with what our composting capacity is. So they're really, I mean, this has been said, I've just arrived, so I have missed most of what has been said before. But that's one of the biggest problems I have, is why not enact a bylaw that's going to be pure and will be able to conform these compostable plastic bags? As well, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee voted four to two against this article. And it's also a litter problem. You know, usually, as I make my rounds in Brookline, I don't seem to notice too much litter.
One minute.
One minute, okay. I did find some litter on my way back from Coolidge Corner this afternoon. I have to wear these gloves because, and these, by the way, are plastic. I really like to use. So this is what I came across, the first, where is it? There was a cup holder, which I thought, ironic. So in the Center Street lot, I came across this, and I thought, how ironic, after last night's victory with the polystyrene, I mean banning polystyrene, we find one of these in the Center Street lot. On my way down, I live on Summit Ave, but on my way down, I walked on the sunnier side of the street, on the north side of Summit, and there was no litter. Okay, then on the way up, I noticed this, but it's from Market Basket, so it's not from Brookline. I think the nearest Market Basket is from Somerville. Then two Dunkin' Donuts, these one styrene, then another Dunkin' Donuts, and then another cup, and then two receipts. So anyway, just, I'm voting against the article, because I'm a purist, but whatever, I think it'll make a impact and be educational.
It's the modern-day Michael Dukakis. Ms. Gilman?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen, Advisory Committee, and my colleagues on Town Meeting. I'm Jane Gilman from Precinct Three, speaking on behalf of the Green Caucus. Karen, thank you for setting a very high standard. My show-and-tell is something that Don picked up yesterday when he collected the copies that the Green Caucus had out on the table yesterday. This is what Staples put a rather large order of copying in, and it says, "It's not just a box, it's a commitment. Thanks to this eco-conscious packaging, today's copy and print purchase isn't only helping your business, it's helping your planet too." Let's be clear. A plastic bag ban is not a solid waste issue. It is not a climate change issue. It's about environmental stewardship, clean water, clean air, and protection of wildlife. Wildlife mistakes bags for food or becomes entangled in them, and marine life is the most susceptible to ingesting them. These creatures suffer a slow, painful death, as plastic wraps around their intestines or they choke to death. One hundred and twenty-five species are threatened with extinction solely because of our use of plastic bags. Bags litter our public spaces, and you've heard various opinions about whether or not they enter the ocean. The fact is, plastic has entered the food chain. It's increasingly present in fish consumed by humans. When our animal friends die, it's also our survival that is dying. A plastic bag never disappears. It does, however, break down into increasingly smaller bits of toxic material. Forty-six thousand witty, weeny-teeny pieces of plastic float in every square mile of the ocean. This stuff cannot be removed. Bags are a huge problem for our planet, to the degree that the United Nations Environment Program states, quote, "There is simply zero justification for manufacturing them anymore, anywhere," end quote. Now, the plastics industry is campaigning to defeat anti-bag measures nationwide, and, Dick, I'm glad to hear that you were not persuaded by them. They're using the same techniques they used to protect the cigarette industry, and now to deny global warming. They intentionally shift the conversation from the harm we cause by our plastic bags to off-point arguments. We hear stores will stop recycling if the ban is voted. Even if that were true, you should know that somewhere only about five percent of plastic bags in the U.S. are recycled in any form anyway. We've heard industry claims that they are ahead of their goal to reduce plastic bag use. Do you know that their bags have not been substantiated, that they resist an independent Do you know that their bags have not been substantiated, that they resist an independent audit to verify their progress? But if there were, in fact, the 33% reduction in use that they tout, it would be better than nothing. But even that reduction would place us below the achievements of Botswana and Burma. See what I've done here? I'm talking about a distraction. This number is not the issue. The industry tries to convince us that we aren't smart enough to bring reusable shopping bags with us. Do you ever wonder how people throughout the world are making do without these bags, but we, in Brookline, can't? We know that reusable bags are everywhere. They hold twice as much as plastic shopping bags, and they're sturdier.
One minute.
Thank you. Lobbyists want us to debate plastic versus paper. This is a false dichotomy and the wrong analysis. The real question is, will we be influenced against doing the right thing, or will we move to protect our planet? I have a fact for you. There is no way to use bags responsibly. The bags are the problem. It's in their nature to become litter. Now, our merchants want to do the right thing, and they are already moving in that direction. And I hold that they are just as clever and nimble as our business people anywhere else in the world.
Thirty seconds.
Others have managed to stay in business despite bag bans. Outsiders are trying to split us, but it is not us against our business community. We need our merchants, and they need us. What's happening outside of Brookline, quickly? Nantucket banned in 1990, Ireland, 2002, Bangladesh, 2002, Rwanda, 2005, China.
Please conclude, Ms. Gilman.
Banned plastic bags, and in one year, they eliminated some 40 billion bags and saved the energy equivalent of 11.7 million barrels of oil.
No, that doesn't mean read the rest of your speech. That means please conclude.
Thank you, sir. We are lagging in citizenship, and it's time for Brookline to join the community. Thank you.
Mr. Spiegel?
Mr. Moderator, Stanley Spiegel. I have a comment I want to bring to the attention of the Town Meeting regarding the economics here. I did a quick back-of-the-envelope calculation as I was sitting here. If paper bags are four cents each, and plastic is one cent each, that's a differential of three cents per bag. The fine is a hundred bucks a week. That's the maximum fine in this article. At three cents a bag, all it takes is less than 3,500 bags for it to be awash. You know, it was something about less than 50 customers a day on a seven-day week would mean that no large market or pharmacy should consider making a change whether we pass this ban or not. Because the economics work out that they'd be better off paying the fine and keeping the plastic bags than going to paper. I'd like to see the plastic bags removed. I'd like to see paper removed. I think the responsible way to do this is to have our merchants have to charge a nickel or a dime per bag. And that way, we don't have to worry about paper or plastic. That's a big incentive to have folks come and use their own cloth bags, or reusable bags, I should say. I don't know what's happened in Nantucket, I don't know what's happened elsewhere, I don't know how effective it is, but I do know the mathematics, from, at least from my quick calculation, that if it only cost, that's 3,500 bags a week, that's divided by seven, 500 bags a day, 14-hour day, 36 bags an hour. If you replace plastic by paper, it becomes cost-effective to have the merchants continue using plastic just as before. My concern is that despite the worthy intention of this, and an intention which I thoroughly support, I don't think this is the way to achieve that end. Because it seems to me the mathematics of it to the merchants are, hey, we got to keep on plastic because paper would cost us too much in the long run. We should charge for bags. I'll probably vote for this, but I wish it had been a ban that would be more effective, and I fear this one won't work. Thank you.
Mr. Bassett?
John Bassett, Precinct Six. Mr. Moderator, would you accept a motion to refer this to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee?
Yeah, I'll take that motion. Is there a second? Your motion's been seconded, Mr. Bassett.
I'm not sure. Somebody just said that SWAC doesn't consider solid waste. If that's right, maybe it's the wrong place. I haven't asked them in advance. It seems to me there's, if you think you have a better place, I'd be glad to hear it.
Well, it's not up to me to think of the better place, Mr. Bassett. It's up to you.
All right. Then I'll leave it there. I'm just, I'm hearing convincing arguments on both sides. I think there's a lot of uncertainty. I think the existing Article Nine is flawed in several ways, and I think we should be looking at more information and possibly a better article. Thank you.
So you're standing with your motion to refer this matter to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee? No. There are exceptions for simple motions, Mr. Fisher, that can be understood easily. And a motion to refer falls in that category. Yes?
Mr. Moderator, all the smarter people around me suggest that a moderators committee would be a better place.
I knew it.
I'll change my motion to a moderators committee. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Thank you. Mr. Schwartz?
I just wanted to point out a couple of things. First of all, oh, Chuck Schwartz, Precinct Nine. First of all, I don't think it's been mentioned, although it is in the article, that this ban refers to bags at checkout and not bags that are elsewhere in the store, for instance, for packing your fruits and vegetables. I also wanted to make a comment about Mr. Banka's comments, that they were very well-presented, but it did not address the wastefulness of plastic bags. What used to fit into one paper bag now very often takes five or six plastic bags, and very often those bags are doubled and even tripled. And this would affect Mr. Spiegel's math when he considers all the paper bags that are used to replace that one paper bag. And I also wanted to ask Mr. Richmond or anybody if they can bring or mention any other communities that have a similar ban. I know Nantucket has been mentioned, but are there any other communities in the country that have that ban? Thank you.
Can anyone respond to that question? Mr. Banka?
May I just respond to the first comment about...
No, you can't respond to a comment. You can answer a question if you can. Yeah, Mr. Fisher?
Andrew Fisher, Precinct Thirteen, and I speak as a member of the Green Caucus.
Well, speak, answer the question only.
To answer the question, the town, the island of Nantucket has banned all non-reusable bags for 25 years. It hasn't affected commerce there, I believe, or property values. The town of Barrington, Rhode Island, has banned plastic bags recently because of the effect in an arrogant city bay. And I believe there are over 100 communities in California, including San Francisco and LA, that have banned plastic, take-home, not, single-use bags. There are also a number of countries, I think Ms. Gilman recounted some, there are various countries, including...
Rwanda and Bangladesh.
And China, and provinces in India, and parts of Ireland, and the list is quite lengthy. I think it's in materials that we...
Yes, sir. No, not you, Mr. Banka, the gentleman on your right. Into the microphone, please, sir.
My name is David Low, and I am from Precinct Eleven. The comment, I'd like, I have a different take on it of many other thoughts in response to comments that have been made, but I'll restrain myself. The take I have on this is, it's an imperfect bill, but we are raising awareness by putting it forward. And if we vote for this, there will be lots of discussion in town. There may be some discussion if we vote it down, but there'll be a lot more discussion if we vote it in. And I think that's the crucial part of this bill. Yes, wildlife will be greatly impacted by bags, that's my main concern. I don't think we're going to reduce solid waste tremendously by passing this. I don't think we're going to reduce the number of plastic bags in the world enough to notice. So people who need plastic bags can still obtain them, but by passing this, we're raising awareness, both in our own community and in the communities around us. We're starting a conversation about the wastefulness. The gentleman from Dart Company last night made the comment that, sorry, I just lost my thought. He made the comment that we, oh, I did lose it. I'm sorry. In response to the comment I can't think of, we are our own enemy. That's right. He made the comment that, in a letter, he wrote, that we are, it's our behavior that is the problem. And I agree, it's our behavior. It's how we use resources and how we throw away resources. And by addressing this issue, as the one last night, Article Eight, we are saying that there's a problem here, and we need to address it, we need to think more about it. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fraley? Well, we'll hear from Ms. Fraley. I've called on her.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Regina Fraley from Precinct Sixteen. I really have more of a question. I do have multiple reusable bags that I use for my shopping, but I'm a big meat eater, and I don't know what I would do if they had not put the meat in a plastic bag so that I could carry it home without ruining my bags. I do repurpose everything. Instead of using Saran Wrap, I use it to cover my salads after I put them in a large bowl in the refrigerator, and I dye my hair with them. I do repurpose them, so I wouldn't know what to do if they were not available at all. So I'm wondering if something such as putting the meat in it at the supermarket could be exempted from whatever your committee or any other committee who studies it, would they please consider that? Thank you.
Town Council, please respond to Ms. Fraley.
Jennifer Gilbert, Town Council. So the bags you're speaking about are exempt. These apply to checkout bags at the point of sale.
Thank you.
Okay, the question's been called. I have two other speakers who signed up, Mr. Smizik and Mr. Fisher, who had half a day in the sun, anyway. You can see who's standing at the microphones. We've already heard from at least three of them. Is there a second to the motion for the question?
Second.
Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion fails. Okay.
May I speak, Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Gilman, why don't you yield to Ms. Cook-Chiles? We've already heard five minutes from you.
Lee Cook-Chiles. I'm Lee Cook-Chiles from Precinct Twelve. It seems to me this is really about living lightly on the planet. I have a beautiful silk-screened cloth bag that I got at the Harvest Food Co-op, and I've been using it for about 15 years. I have also reusable bags from Whole Foods, Trader Joe's, the World Wildlife Foundation, UNICEF, also Century Bank, Republic Bank, and a bunch of others. Now, it took me a while to train myself to keep them in the car, keep them by the door, take them in. It's a little incentive when they give me a nickel for bringing in a bag. But as far as feeling good about doing something about saving the planet, how big a deal is it? And my bags, I throw them in the washing machine. It does not ruin the bags to get them a little wet, a little dirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf? Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bruce Wolf, Precinct Two. If I'm just trying to, if Dick Banka mentioned that the water from Brookline all does not go into the ocean, this would be incorrect. There's 110 acres surrounding Hall's Pond where the water goes into Hall's Pond and from Hall's Pond down to the river, and of course, out to the ocean. This correction is relevant and affects what he has said.
Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Karen?
John, Karen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Twelve, and cutter in line. Well, listening to the debate, it's obvious that I think everybody in the room cares very deeply about the environment, takes this issue very seriously. But like John Bassett, I don't know which direction to go in that actually would do more for the environment, except maybe using reusable bags, which, you know, I'll think about. Okay. But that's also not what the warrant article does. If you really wanted to do that, you would bite the bullet and ban everything except reusable, except the use of reusable bags. Now, but let's talk about the warrant article that we have. The warrant article that we have bans plastic bags. Now, what is it, about 4,000 people come out to vote in the town election? And how big is the rest of the town? And how many of the rest of the people in the town are students and transients and folks? Most people, regardless of what we do, you vote this article, if you eliminate plastic, they're going to use paper bags. Some people will be educated, a few more people will use reusable bags. I'll probably listen to my wife and even consider it myself, and then forget and get yelled at. But most people won't use reusable bags as a result of passing the warrant article. What they will do is they'll use paper instead of plastic. Now, that may be a very good thing. I don't know. Or if Dick's right, maybe it's a bad thing. I don't know. I find everybody who's talked here acting in goodwill, seems knowledgeable. I don't know. And that's why I would suggest that since the one thing everybody agrees in is that we take the environment very seriously, I would suggest that you accept John Bassett's motion, refer it to a moderators committee, let's bring it back the next town meeting, let's get this right and do the best we can to improve the environment. Everybody agrees that's what we want. Let's figure out what does it. I want to vote for what does it. John wants to vote for what does it. I think everybody wants to vote for what's best. I got no clue what that is. Maybe it's because I'm not bright enough, but those of us who could use some more guidance would be helped if we could refer it to a moderators committee. So that's what I'll suggest. I haven't decided how I'll vote if that motion goes down, but I'm glad we're discussing these things.
Thank you. Let's hear from Mr. Smizik. You can tell me when you've had enough.
Thank you. My name is Frank Smizik. I'm from Precinct Nine, and as a state legislator, I'm also here at HAWK. As a state representative of Brookline, I'm proud to work for a community that's forward-thinking, conscientious, and environmentally concerned. As the chairman of the House Committee on Climate Change, I strive to protect the environment and our community from detrimental environmental impacts. In fact, I proposed a bill similar to this, not quite the same, this bill that we're talking about tonight. However, we've lost in the legislature because of procedural moves by opponents at the last minute. There are at least 6,000 bills filed every year in the legislature, and only a few major bills are passed. It is much easier to use rules to defeat a bill than to have a bill become law. One of the best things about being in Town Meeting, and you can argue and promote your bills in Town Meeting, and the decision is mostly made on the merits. Warrant Article Nine seeks to ban the use of disposable plastic bags in certain retail stores. There are many reasons to support the bill. One major reason is that local communities there have a better chance of getting a bill passed, if a bill, getting a bill passed in the state if a bill is passed in a local community. For instance, in Brookline, we barred smoking in restaurants. It gained support in other communities, and later became the law of the Commonwealth. As a legislator, I always look at harm that's being caused by a problem, whether the bill should address, whether the bill that's pending will address the problem. And what are some of the harms here? Some of them have been mentioned, but excuse me if I repeat. As Americans, we throw away over 100 billion petroleum-based plastic bags a year. In Massachusetts alone, we use over 3 million plastic bags per day. From this large quantity, only 5.2% are recycled. That shows... That shows that the recycling method isn't working or can't work enough to solve the It takes 1.6 billion gallons of petroleum, a nonrenewable fossil fuel, to make the billions of bags that are used annually in our country. Producing one pound of plastic for shopping bags creates six pounds of harmful CO2. That's dangerous. That's a problem. I don't know the statistics for paper bags, but that's enough to get rid of the plastic These plastic bags are incredibly slow to break down, and when they do, they run into toxic compounds and contaminate our soil and waterways, often entering into the food chain, contributing to environmental degradation and threats to our public health, such as West Nile encephalitis. Several reports adopted by the United Nations program have shown that thousands of marine creatures die every day, every year, from eating discarded plastic bags mistaken for food. One swallow of plastic bags can choke animals or block their intestines, leading to painful deaths. Other reports have shown traces of hard plastics remaining within the bodies of the fish and other sea life caught by fishermen for selling purposes.
You have one minute, sir.
Most people like myself have probably seen these bags littering trees and bushes lining our streets and blocking our drains, which can result even in flooding. Water runoff also gets trapped. The article tries to eliminate these risks by eliminating the use of disposable plastic bags by certain retail stores like grocery stores and chain pharmacies. Nothing in this article precludes any store from selling reusable bags, and they could use, sell the canvas bags and the cloth bags there, and they could be available to anybody who wants to buy them there.
Thirty seconds.
And it makes sense. This warrant article will go a long way toward addressing the harms I have mentioned. Let's lead by example. We've done it in the past, and we can do it again in Brookline. Thank you.
I have a motion for the question. I can't imagine that we've not heard, well, never mind. Mike? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of calling the question, I have, well, Mr. Fisher never really got his, his time to, time in the limelight, and he has a PowerPoint presentation. You can see who's at the microphones. So all those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed? The motion fails. Ms. Joz Wiki.
Joyce Joz Wiki, Precinct 9. I'm a former school committee. In my nine years on the school committee, the thing that really sent me over the edge when I'd hear, "This is a flawed motion, but we need to do something." If it's a flawed motion, let's get it right. We have to change behavior. The bags don't behave. The people who use them behave. So I support John Bassett's motion to refer the article until we can get it right. A feel-good article that we pass means we will never discuss this again.
Thank you. Gentleman on my left?
Adam Mitchell, Precinct 2, former Solid Waste Advisory Committee Chair, former member of the Selectmen's Committee on Pays You Throw, and also former member of the Moderators' Committee on Trash Disposal. I was looking through my packet before town meeting to look, to see if the Moderators' Committee on Trash Disposal was going to report back to town meeting. They originally reported in their minutes that they were going to do that in November of 2010. I think it's two years later. Was there any communication from that committee on this topic?
It's been three years, and I'm told by the chair of that committee that a final report will be forthcoming within the next couple of months.
So that's a total of about five years spent on the big picture of solid waste management, because this is a big picture issue as well on bags. And I'd like to speak against referring this to the Moderators' Committee unless you'd like to wait another five years to talk about anything of substance regarding solid waste.
Well, we have had moderators' committees that have acted with a little more alacrity. Ms. Cavell?
Kathleen Cavell, Precinct 1. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. I looked over the shoulder of my neighbor, Mr. Gallatano, who had, who had summoned up a list on his, on his iPad of at least 100 communities nationwide who've passed bans on plastic bags. And I too oppose sending this to a moderators' committee. I don't think the perfect should be the enemy of the good. I think it's good. I think we need it. And I think 100 or more other communities have passed this kind of ban, and it seems to be working. So I suggest that we vote for it now, and if it needs amending or changing in the future, we can do that. But for now, I don't see why we have to reinvent the wheel. It is a good idea, and its time has come.
Mr. Jones?
Gary Jones, Precinct 3. I want to share with you a concern that my family has, and it's a puzzlement for me because as long as I've lived in Brookline, I've had dogs. But not just lap dogs, not just small dogs, very, very big dogs. I'm talking about mastiffs. I'm talking about bouviers. And when, when I see an article warrant that's going to talk about banning heavy-volume bags, this creates a problem. It creates a problem in my family. And we are big users every day, every week, every month, every year of plastic bags. And if you've ever met any of my dogs, you understand what I'm talking about. And this is a health concern to me, to my neighborhood, to my yard, to my park, Lawrence Park and my neighborhood. So like I said, I've, I've been concerned about this. I've asked some of the petitioners, and they say, "Well, use your newspaper bag." Well, I'll tell you something. My Wall Street Journal newspaper bag simply doesn't do the job. And I know it's well-intentioned, but, you know, I'd like to see this studied and come up with an alternative. And by the way, I'm not the only big dog owner in Brookline. I happen to be one of the few that's in town meeting. But this is also an issue. It is an issue that touches on us. And for that reason, I favor referring this to a moderators' committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher, would you like to present?
I have a slideshow that indicates that contrary to some of the opponents, what some of the opponents have represented, this is a problem in Brookline. The slideshow consists of, it starts with Town Hall and ends in Addington Road, or the other way around. And these are pictures I've taken as I bicycled around Brookline, whittled down so that the slide, so that it doesn't last more than five minutes. It could go on for a lot longer. But this indicates that there really is a problem here. Let me be, also, before I state, and I didn't say I am still Andrew Fisher, Precinct 13.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that.
To answer those who would rather refer this to a moderators' committee, which is what the state House has done to Representative Smizik's legislation and to the Senate bill that this is modeled on, it's been referred to committee. And you see what that's done to it and where the action has been. And referral to a committee is a cowardly way of not doing anything. Let me, let me speak first to the notion of recycling and remind you that recycling is the third step in the way we should deal with waste. It's replace, reuse, and recycle. And recycle is when you can't replace or reuse. Some plastic bags get reused, but they can be replaced and replaced with non-throwaway bags. This is, and now let me go to some of the straw arguments that have been raised against this. First of all, this is not a flawed bill. This is a targeted bill. This does not say you can, this is not a bill about paper versus plastic. This is a bill about getting rid of a throwaway product that creates, that we don't need and that we can replace. There are other products that are harmful, that are difficult to replace. Those are tough choices. This is something that we don't need. We did without plastic bags until the last 20, 25 years. We have reasonable replacements. And this is not a choice between throwaway paper and throwaway plastic. If it were, I could argue very well for the effectiveness or for the prep, why we should prefer paper. Paper comes from trees. Trees are a renewable resource, unlike fossil fuels. And the, those who own forests are very careful to maintain them, and when a tree is cut, it is replaced. I needn't go more into that because that's not the issue, and that was done very well in a letter that was sent to the Town Meeting Members Association. For those of you who haven't read it, you should. This is not about paper versus plastic. This is, that's a straw argument. As Ms. Gilman said, when you have something that you can't defend, you don't defend it, you find diversions. This isn't about paper versus plastic. This is about whether we're going to continue to destroy our planet by being a throwaway culture or whether we're going to stop being a throwaway culture and replace throwaway products with reusable products. We have been criticized for saying that we're, for a lot of things, a lot of things have been misconstrued about this bill. This bill does not prevent anyone from doing anything other than not using throwaway plastic bags that can't be recycled. It doesn't force anyone to use anything. There are lots of alternatives. And here is the best argument for not referring it. One of the things we changed in this bill, we followed Nancy Heller's lead and took a long lead time.
One, one minute, Mr. Fisher.
We don't need to study this. We have a year to implement it. My good friend, Mr. Jones, has a year to find alternatives. The shopkeepers have a year to figure out what they want to do. But I'll tell you what the Brookline shopkeepers are doing. The owner of, I'm, I'm losing, owner of Booksmith says that 90% of her customers already use canvas or other reusable bags, and she would
Thirty seconds.
Be happy to do away with this even if it were costly. But the owner of Magic Bean says he favors this because not having to give plastic bags or bags would be eliminating an overhead that he could do without. In the end, we have to decide whether we want to be a throwaway society or whether we want to, or whether we want to have a planet for our children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, Mr. Marty Rosenthal, Precinct 9. I was hoping not to talk tonight, but I'm hoping you'll let me address a question to Andy Papasturian, who I saw here, about the recycling of paper bags in the trash that we, if we use paper bags. May I ask my question, and you'll see if it's appropriate?
You can ask your question.
The question is, am I, is it fair to say that if those of us have been taking paper bags and put them in the blue trash bins, that paper gets recycled? That's my question. I personally think that we need to make a statement here, and I'm going to vote for the article, but I'd like to have that piece of information.
Mr. Papasturian?
Andy Papasturian, Commissioner of Public Works. Yes.
Thank you.
We've now, we have our third motion for the question. We've been at this for one hour and 20 minutes. I will express my view that I think we've heard all there is to hear in this particular debate, but this is up to you. Is there a second? All those in favor of calling the question, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. We will vote first on the motion to refer.
Call for a recorded vote on the motion to refer.
If there are 35 town meeting members who wish to have a recorded vote, we will have one, electronic vote. And there are, this should be labeled Article 9 hyphen referral. And whenever you're ready to start the voting period, you can do so. This is on the motion to refer. Those who wish to refer this matter to a moderators' committee would indicate by pressing 1, yes. Those opposed to a referral, press 2. Those abstaining or voting present, press 3. Three seconds. The voting is closed. The motion fails by a vote of 70 in favor, 127 against, and four abstentions. Which leads us to the main motion on pages 3 through 5 of the Brown supplement.
A recorded vote, please.
Ms. Smith would like a recorded vote of the 35 town meeting members who would like a recorded vote. And there are, this should be Article 9, main motion. Article 9, main motion, and whenever you're ready to start the voting period. If you are in favor of this motion, you will press 1, a yes vote. If you're opposed, you'll press 2, 3 for an abstention. Okay. Start your voting now. This is on the main motion on page 3 of the Brown supplement. Three seconds. Voting period is over. The motion carries by a vote of 141 in favor, 53 opposed, and seven abstentions. We have disposed of Articles 10 and 11 and turn now to Article 12. The motion offered under Article 12 is on page 12 dash 3, the advisory committee's motion. It's moved by Ms. Hummel, seconded by Mr. Boers, that the town authorize the selectman to lease property at 27 Ackers Avenue for not more than three years. The Board of Selectmen, if you refer to the motion on page 12 dash 3, the Board of Selectmen would delete the words in the, at the end of the third line, "for not more than three years," with an option to renew for three years, comma, and, and delete the word "other" before terms in the fourth line. So it would read, if the selectman's amendment is approved, which was moved by Mr. Goldstein and seconded by Mr. Witt, that the town authorize the selectman to lease the property at 27 Ackers Avenue in accordance with the requirements of general laws, et cetera, upon such terms and conditions determined by the Board of Selectmen to be in the best interest of the town. town. In other words, the selectmen are in favor of eliminating the three-year restriction on the leasing arrangement. Ms. Hummel?
Amy Hummel, Precinct 12, speaking for the advisory committee. Article 12 asks Town Meeting to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into lease of up to 30 years for the town-owned property at 27 Acres Avenue. 27 Acres is a small, one-bedroom, one-bath house located on Warren Playground. It's approximately 800 square feet and in good condition. For the past 10 years, it's been led to a health, sorry, a Heath School teacher who had a five-year lease with an option to renew for five years, which she exercised. Under the prior lease terms, the rent for the house was $800 a month, and it included utilities. That amount increased 3% each year and is now $1,016 a month. The town takes care of the upkeep, and since 2005, the town has made approximately $12,000 worth of repair there. The lease expired on November 1st. The selectmen are now seeking the authority from Town Meeting to issue into a request for proposals on the property. The details of the lease are at their discretion. However, Town Meeting may limit the number of years on the lease, which is what the advisory committee recommends. Because the rent on the property is low, and the building department expends resources managing and maintaining it, the committee first considered a possible sale of the property. Would it be better to explore selling the house instead of continuing to rent it? The benefits would be a one-time sale value and the subsequent property tax revenue, balanced against a relatively low rental income. Rates for similar-sized properties in Brookline typically run from $1,500 to $1,800 a month, I've been told, and the town resources used to manage and maintain the property. The committee recognized that because the house is on town-owned parkland, Brookline would have to petition the state to divide the parcel under Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution. In addition to that hurdle, which the town might not clear, several members were unenthusiastic about considering a sale because the house is located on parkland, because the building, built in 1866, has some historic significance to the town's history, and because it could be used by the town for other purposes in the future, such as education or affordable housing. Once the discussion about this possible sale concluded, the committee considered the length of the lease. When the last RFP for the property went out 10 years ago, the maximum allowable lease term was 10 years, and now the Mass. general laws permit 30-year lease period, as you've heard. The consensus among the committee members was that while a long-term lease may make sense for a nonprofit lessee, a much shorter lease period makes, is more appropriate for a residential property. A shorter lease period would provide the town with flexibility in either, to either use the building for a different purpose, or to adjust the rental amount in case, as in the previous lease, the rent does not keep up with the market rates. While the town assess, I want to comment on this too, the Town Assessors Office does determine the value of the town-owned properties. As a general rule, though, it uses a cost approach, assigning value to the land and building, and then factoring in a replacement cost and depreciation. It doesn't typically calculate the value for town-owned rental properties in the same way that private owners would. And in, even if the Assessors Office were to use comparables to values 27 acres, there's no knowing for certain how the rental market would fluctuate over time. So while there is value in finding and keeping reliable tenants for this or any other town-owned property, there's also value in assuring the town has some flexibility in using the building in some other manner or adjusting the rent should the need arise. Therefore, authorizing the selectmen to enter into a lease term of up to three years with an option to renew of up to three years seemed to strike a reasonable balance to most committee members. So the advisory recommends favorable action on its own motion on page 12 dash 3 of the combined reports, bless the last sentence, on a vote in favor of, by 16 to 2 with one abstention.
Thank you. And I forgot to mention that at the end of that motion that's set forth on 12 dash 3, the words or act on anything relative thereto should of course be stricken. That was a word processing problem. Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Ken Goldstein for the Board of Selectmen. So the distinction between the advisory committee's recommendation and the Board of Selectmen's recommendation is very narrow. It's a matter of whether 30 years or the three plus three years is, is what's authorized by Town Meeting. So the original warrant article is drafted by the administration, 30 years is put in there because that's the extent of our legislative authority for leasing property. That's the maximum. Look, Town Council knows, the Board of Selectmen knows, the, Mr. Gina Karkus, the Town Procurement Officer who runs the RFP process, they all know that at an, for an arms-length transaction to a residential user of this property, that a short-term lease, 10 years or less, makes the most sense. We all know that. No, no need to overthink it. It's precisely, though, because this is parkland, and because it's a small, single-family house and produces relatively little income for the town, that there's the, at least the remote possibility that this property will be appropriate for some other use, such as, we heard last night about the school housing crisis, you know, the classroom crisis. Is it possible, there's no plan for this, don't get excited. But is it possible that the town might decide to rent this property to the, to the school department for use for, for school purposes? It's possible. In that instance, as Ms. Hummel said, longer-term leases might be appropriate. For that reason, flexibility alone on that narrow question, the Board of Selectmen unanimously asked for the 30-year version of this warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you. On the Board of Selectmen's amendment to eliminate the time restrictions in the motion, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Well, we're going to have an electronic vote since the chair is in doubt. You'd label this Article 12, BOS amendment. And this is a vote, not a recorded vote, but it's a vote strictly to get an accurate count. We could do this with the tellers, but it takes considerably longer. And anytime you're ready for the voting period?
Explain what the vote will be?
The vote is on the Board of Selectmen's amendment to eliminate the three-year time restriction from the advisory committee's motion. If you favor eliminating the time restriction, you will vote yes, 1. If you oppose, you'll vote no, or press 2. And of course, if you abstain or are voting present, you will press 3. Okay, the voting period has commenced. The voting period is now terminated. The Board of Selectmen's motion to amend passes by a vote of 91 in favor, 78 against, and 17 abstentions. On the main motion, as amended by the selectmen's amendment, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries. Article 13. The motion under Article 13 is on page 13 dash 2. It's moved by Mr. Benka and seconded by Ms. Hummel, that the town authorize the selectmen to lease the property known as 15 Newton Street, the Lars Anderson Auto Museum, with no restrictions on the term of the lease. Mr. Benka?
Thank you, Dick Benka for unanimous Board of Selectmen. This article will authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease the Lars Anderson Carriage House and contiguous site. The current tenant is the Lars Anderson Auto Museum. The museum's lease expired on December 31st of last year, and the museum is currently paying an amount on a month-to-month basis. I want to clarify that contrary to what the combined reports state, the museum has not yet signed an interim license agreement with the town for that interim use of the property. But they have made the payments called for by that agreement. I've received a number of emails in support of the auto museum in connection with this article. I just want to make clear that this vote is not about the auto museum. It's about the ongoing responsible use of the property, of the carriage house and the surrounding land. The existing lease for the property, as I've said, has expired, and by law, under Chapter 30B, the town will have to issue an RFP, and there will be a competitive bidding process. The auto museum will be eligible to bid, along with other charitable and educational institutions, assuming that it resolves its outstanding issues with the town prior to the time of that RFP. The precise length and terms of any lease will be determined as a result of that competitive bidding process. But it could, as allowed by recent state legislation, be up to a maximum of 30 years, presumably with an initial term of years, plus options and escalators along the way. I should note that unlike the last vote, where there was a debate about how long the authorization should be, there is no dispute about the fact that the authorization under this vote should be for the full 30 years provided by state law. We recognize that non-for-profit organizations can benefit from longer-term leases, as opposed to a residential situation such as the Acres Avenue situation. A longer-term lease provides potential donors, especially donors being asked to fund capital projects, with some assurance that a not-for-profit will be around with some permanence. As an example, the town, after the passage of special legislation that was required at that time, provided a 25-year lease to the Brookline Art Center for that very reason of donor assurance. Under state law, such special legislation is no longer needed. The vote of Town Meeting will provide the requisite authority for a lease of up to 30 years, if that is the outcome of the RFP process. That will in turn provide a notable building in the town with an assurance that it is used productively, and that it is generating funds for its maintenance and preservation. The Board of Selectmen unanimously joins a substantial majority of the advisory committee in urging favorable action on Article 13. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benka. Ms. Hummel?
Amy Hummel, speaking for the advisory committee. The advisory committee supports this article. However, members did express concern about regarding the large sum the current resident still owns the town for the, for the property, some of the details of which appear on 13 dash 3 of the combined reports. The terms of the prior lease in which the town and the auto museum officials met to value in-kind services, volunteer work, and capital improvements after they were performed did not work as intended. The committee was glad to hear that elements of a more straightforward rental agreement have already been formulated to some degree for inclusion in the next RFP. The changes include, among other things, making regularly scheduled payments. The current tenant, having already made progress in meeting some of the agreed financial obligations it has to the town under the expired lease, is eligible to respond to the new RFP. And the museum has also made it clear it's interested in entering into a long-term lease. The committee agrees that a long-term lease at the site makes sense. But regardless of who the next tenant is, most nonprofits would likely prefer the benefit from a long-term lease, as the selectmen have said, for strategic planning purposes. Given the long history of the museum on the site, and the Andersons' enthusiasm for their cars and their generous gift to the town, the committee generally supports a scenario in which the museum would have an opportunity to enter into a new lease there. The Andersons donated the property to the town with the stipulation that it be used for, and this is a quote, "purposes of public recreation, for charitable purposes, or for the purposes of education." With that language in mind, there was some discussion about other possible uses of the site by qualifying organizations, which might be widely used and appreciated by Brookline residents. Perhaps if the site were more easily accessible by public transportation, or situated in a more central location, alternative uses might be more likely. The auto museum itself was in Boston for five years in the mid-1970s as part of a consortium with a children's museum. There were a few members who felt that authorizing the selectmen to enter into a 20-year lease instead of a 30-year lease at the 15 Newton Street location would provide any nonprofit lessee sufficient security and planning opportunities, while offering the town more flexibility and control of the property. The majority of the committee, however, felt that providing the selectmen an option to enter into a lease of up to 30 years with any qualified nonprofit was reasonable. So by a third of 14 to 2, with one abstention, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on Article 13.
Thank you. On the motion on page 13 dash 2, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.[1548.51][1548.51](APPLAUSE). All right, how, would those voting against, please raise your hands?[1558.47][1558.47](LAUGHTER). I still can't see you.[1563.47][1563.47](LAUGHTER). Okay. Looks like a unanimous vote.[1568.85][1568.85](LAUGHTER). And I, I want to mention that we've had our first battery casualty in the, these handheld devices. And Ms. Spiegel was not recorded as voting on Article IX. She voted in favor, so add 1 to the total number of votes in favor of Article IX.[1590.51][1590.51](APPLAUSE). She apparently, apparently failed after that dramatic vote on referral.[1599.13][1599.13](LAUGHTER). Okay, Article 14. Please turn to page 14 dash 8. And the first thing I'd like you to do is to correct something in the selectmen's write-up. On the first line on page 14 dash 8, it should read license for the Circle Cinema area, and then change two licenses to five licenses for the Waldo Street area, and two licenses instead of five for the Brookline Place location. The, those numbers were correct in the motion, which appears in the middle of page 14 dash 8, and including the maps, accompanying maps goes over to the page 14 dash 13. Moved by Ms. DeWitt, seconded by Ms. Jonas, that the town empower the selectmen to file a petition with the general court for an act authorizing the town of Brookline to grant 11 additional licenses for the sale of all alcoholic beverages. One in the Circle Cinema area, five in the Waldo Street area, two in the Brookline Place, and three additional, well, you'll hear it described in detail when we hear from, it's moved by Ms. DeWitt and seconded by Ms. Jonas. Mr. Goldstein, you please cover the number and location of the licenses being requested. Thank you.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Ken Goldstein, for the unanimous Board of Selectmen. The, the last bit of data was three unrestricted licenses, by the way. So it probably doesn't even need to be said, but the restaurant and liquor business are important to Brookline for many reasons. Leave alone for a second the local option taxes from liquor and meal taxes, local option taxes from liquor and meal sales, which is about a million dollars in our budget. But that only tells part of the story. Take a walk, if you will, through Washington Square any night of the week, not just Friday and Saturday night, and you'll see a section of our town that is vibrant from restaurants that are present there. You'll see storefronts that are well-maintained, not just the restaurants, but the businesses nearby them. You'll see people out walking around. You'll see people enjoying themselves. You'll see people who, if they don't live here already, wish they do, they did live here because of the desirable nature of the, the commercial environment that's been created there and is anchored by restaurants. This vitality is directly attributed to those excellent restaurants in Coolidge Corner, Brookline Village, Putaham, and Chestnut Hill host similar establishments. Most restaurants need liquor licenses to compete. The problem is that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is operating under a liquor license quota system, which is an system, which is an archaic vestige of the end of the prohibition era. Under the state system, which is Mass. General Law's 138, Section 17, each city or town in the Commonwealth has a limited number of liquor licenses. The ABCC, that's the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, roughly gives one liquor license per 1,000 residents. Brookline has essentially used up its quota at this point. Selectwoman DeWitt and I co-chair a committee that we call the Selectmen's Licensing Review Committee, and in that committee, we work with Associate Town Counsel Patty Correa to debug all types of licensing in the town, but especially liquor licensing. The Licensing Review Committee has studied the subject of the expiring liquor licenses in town extensively. We've conducted public hearings. We've met on multiple occasions with our current licensees, and the committee has concluded that, and the vote of selectmen concurs, that the town should not merely accept the arbitrary limit of liquor licenses which results from the state system. We know better than the General Court of 1933 knows how many is an appropriate number of liquor licenses for our town. The problem is that getting additional licenses requires a very concerted legislative effort. The gatekeeper for the requisite legislation is the Joint Committee on Consumer Affairs and Professional Licensor. Through Ms. Correa, we've been in touch with the general counsel for the committee and staff for the committee chairs. As much as we'd like to simply move for 11 new licenses to be allocated throughout the town as we see fit, we've been advised that we need to be more mindful of the politics involved. According to the Beacon Hill resources, the best chance for getting attention to this warrant article and to our petition to the general court is to posture this as an economic development measure, which it really is. The best way to effect this is to limit the licenses, or most of the licenses, and to tie them to particular development areas for economic development. That's why you have before you a warrant article which seeks, as the moderator stated, one license for the Circle Cinema site, five licenses for the Waldo Street site, two licenses for the B2 parcel, and three unrestricted licenses as well. By the way, the maps in the combined report are out of order, and we apologize for that. Drafting the petition in this way is likely to at least get our foot in the door at Beacon Hill. Once our foot is firmly in that door, it's our intention to argue for the least restrictions that we can get to not necessarily tie them to specific sites and to even expand the number if possible. So raise your voting selectors high in a toast. Here's to a successful legislative effort, and it begins with your support for Article 14, which the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends favorable action upon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jonas.
Hi, Elisa Jonas, Precinct 16, speaking on behalf of the advisory committee in support of Article 14. And as Selectman Goldstein just said, passage of this article will enable the town to file a home rule petition to increase the number of liquor licenses allotted to the town by 11. And eight of these licenses will be assigned to specific sites, and three are non-site-specific to have some licenses available for new restaurants opening in other locations. Currently, Brookline has 63 full liquor licenses that it can distribute to restaurants, and of these, only one is still unassigned. Once that license is assigned, any new restaurant that wants to serve liquor must wait until a currently assigned license becomes available. Economic development studies indicate the demand for restaurants and other food purveyors is high, and Brookline, like other cities and towns in greater Boston, has seen much growth in that area. But lacking additional liquor licenses will limit the town's ability to bring in new restaurant business. In some other municipalities, such as Boston and Cambridge, a costly secondary market has developed, and in those two municipalities, liquor licenses can go for hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's going to limit the types of restaurants that can open to those with sufficient resources to pay the high cost. So this warrant article is proactive, putting the building blocks in place to facilitate new restaurant business for the town and reduce the likelihood that a costly secondary market will develop. There was some discussion by members of the advisory committee that the warrant article may be too restrictive by assigning eight of the 11 licenses to specific locations that are as yet to be developed. At the same time, the town has received conflicting information about the willingness of the legislature to approve licenses that are not site-specific. For that reason, the advisory committee has decided to support the articles as is and thereby get the legislative process going, and at a later date, the town can work with the legislature to formulate the home rule in a manner that both ensures legislative approval and maximizes its usefulness to the town. So by a vote of 22 in favor, three opposed, no abstentions, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on Article 14 as submitted by the selectmen.
Thank you. On the motion on page 14-8 through 14-13, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion carries by a majority vote. Article 15. And I note that people are starting to leave, and I remind you all to turn in your handheld devices in one of the blue bins at the rear of the auditorium. Article 15, the motion offered is that of the petitioner, and it's found at the bottom of page 15-6. Over to the top of page 15-8. Moved by Mr. Vitolo and seconded by Ms. Mermell, that the town meeting adopt a resolution regarding the study of solar-ready roofs on municipal buildings and so forth in the words of the motion. The advisory committee moves to refer -- motion is on page 15-10 -- to refer the subject matter of Article 15 to the Building Commission with a request that the commission and so forth in the words of the referral motion on page 15-10. Moved by Mr. Levitan and seconded by Mr. Boers, Mr. Vitolo. Dr. Vitolo, excuse me.
I'm employed as an expert witness regarding electricity matters before public utility commissions, though neither I nor my employer has any financial interest in this warrant article. Photovoltaic panels, commonly known as solar panels or PV panels, convert the sun's light energy into electricity. The price of PV panels continues to fall, and unlike geothermal or wind, solar installations don't require substantial engineering or construction processes and can be easily installed on existing buildings. To be solar-ready is to make sure that the roof and the rest of the building is prepared for a future installation of solar panels. The Department of Energy's National Renewable Energy Lab has produced a solar-ready Buildings Planning Guide. In it, they lay out what solar-ready is and why it makes sense. Some of the components of being solar-ready include roof design. If the roof is shaded, stop. This is probably not a good place for solar panels. But if it's not, consider the roofing materials when you're installing that new roof or renovating the roof. Make sure that they are compatible with a racking system for the solar panels, and make sure that the roof structurally is sound to hold the panels. Finally -- not finally, but in addition, those mechanical units don't just worry about the view from the neighborhood, but also think about clumping them together and putting them on the north side of the roof to maximize the amount of roof available for solar panels. The rest of the site is also important. Make sure that the breaker panel has sufficient room to wire the solar panels into the building, and reserve some space for the inverter, a piece of equipment that will be installed with the solar panels to convert the DC electricity to AC electricity. These kinds of things are free if we think ahead and prepare ourselves. But if down the road, when we decide to install solar panels, we didn't save room or we put the mechanical units scattered throughout the roof, we'll find installing solar panels is more expensive or not even possible on that roof. It's also free because when we tell the architect, these are the things we care about in our expensive school project or our less expensive roof maintenance project, they can incorporate those things into the design as part of their process. Some things about solar-ready are not free. Installing conduit or chasing so that we can run the wires from the panels to the inverters is not free. And if we have to install footers for mounting racks that penetrate the roof membrane, that's not free either. Cheap, but not free. Solar on Brookline's municipal roofs is a matter of when, not if. Our climate demands it, as does our town's fiscal prudence. But Brookline's municipal warrant specific consideration. So let's study this. Let's consider both the technical issues and the bureaucratic ones. Let's look at the building code and our town's other goals and guidelines regarding climate change, regarding the aesthetics of our built environment, regarding our long-term fiscal planning. This issue is detailed and specific, yet broad in the expertise necessary to fully understand the costs and benefits, avoided costs and foregone benefits. This warrant article does not set policy. It makes no recommendation on how or when to install solar panels. It simply calls for a detailed analysis of a multifaceted, complex issue. The minute we, individuals or as a body, plan for, even though the plan is likely to be tweaked when the moment of implementation arrives -- retirement, the CIP, the drive to grandma's next week.
You have one minute, sir.
That we revise our plans later does not make the planning process any less valuable. For policymakers, including the selectmen and town meeting, to set great policy, we need excellent information and comprehensive analysis. That's why the Board of Selectmen, PAX, the Green Space Alliance, the Climate Action Committee, and the Green Caucus all support the main motion, why the chair of the Building Commission helped write it. A vote against referral and then for the main motion is a necessary first step in having an informed, fact-based conversation about the use of PV on town and school buildings in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daley. And Mr. Levitan, would you come forward, please?
Thank you. Nancy Daley for the Board of Selectmen. The language of the resolution that you have before you in the selectmen's motion is the result of collaboration between Dr. Vitolo, myself, and Janet Feirman, the chairman of the Building Commission. In this revised version of the resolution, the committee would be jointly established by the Building Commission and the Board of Selectmen rather than just a selectmen's committee. Our very fine Building Commission has a number of experts on building processes, but they do not usually set up this type of committee, and the selectmen can bring in people who have expertise in the budgeting aspects of our building projects and expertise in green technology. Setting up this committee would not automatically mean that we're spending extra money on our building projects to make them solar-ready, and quite honestly, the Building Commission believes that currently other green technology offers a better payback, period. The idea of setting up the committee is to begin a conversation about what it would take to make our buildings more appropriate for future solar panel installation when the cost-benefit profile becomes more attractive. One of the possible no or low-cost options that you just heard about from Dr. Vitolo was simply to leave space on the sunny side of the roof so that in the future, you might do something there. I got interested in this topic because as chairman of the Runcle Building Committee -- School Committee, I kept asking if we couldn't put solar panels on the roof, and we did get the maximum -- I want to assure you, we did get the maximum number of Mass. CHIPS points for green construction that we could, but the architects and engineers kept saying that solar panels were not cost-effective at this time. I felt that it would be good if we could at least make the building ready for solar panels in the future. However, without specific information as to how to do that, I did not know how to direct the architects and engineers, and sadly, as we all know, the engineering work on the HVAC system was done fairly late in the process and without consultation with my committee. So I don't know whether they did anything to make that building potentially friendly for solar in the future. The discussion generated by this committee could give some direction in that area and educate all of us for the future. And by the way, I want to invite you December 1st to the Runcle School dedication and building opening. It came out pretty well. It's 1:00. You'll get an email, though. The goal of this committee will not necessarily be to mandate that solar panels go on roofs, but simply look at the cost and benefits to determine when and if it might be feasible and to provide information to be considered in future building or renovation projects. Janet Feirman, in her edits that were added to this version, included the potential topics of conversation comparison with other green technology, because the Building Commission, as I said, is not yet convinced that solar is the way to go. But that's what this committee will be looking at and discussing and learning about. The Building Commissioner has agreed that this committee might be helpful, and the chairman of the Building Commission has signed off on this revised resolution and is willing to participate in the committee process. Having worked with the chairman of the Building Commission on the language, I am somewhat perplexed at the advisory committee's recommendation to refer this back to the Building Commission. Beginning the conversation does not commit the town to any expense, and we may learn something in the process. So the Board of Selectmen urges favorable action on this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Levitan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Fred Levitan, town meeting member, Precinct 14, and a member of the advisory committee. Article 15 seeks town meeting's approval on a resolution asking our selectmen to create a committee to study the potential costs and benefits of a policy requiring some or all town-owned property to be solar-ready and made solar-ready during construction or during a substantial renovation. Solar-ready obviously refers to solar voltaic panels that produce electricity. The advisory committee is ever cognizant of the cost the town pays for electricity and believes that the installation of photovoltaic panels and other energy-saving components is appropriate on certain town-owned properties. The advisory committee discussions on Article 15 centered on a number of issues, including the potential benefits of such use, the ever-changing state building code, the difficulty in predicting what technology may be available in the future, the difficulty in identifying future costs, and many other issues. However, we all agree that green technology should be utilized wherever and when of it they are found to be cost-effective for the town. No one is going to win or lose with the vote that's going to follow us. The town will move forward with solar-ready technologies regardless of the committee that's appointed. The differences between the petitioner's article and the advisory committee's recommended vote on page 15-10 is solely the makeup of the committee used to study the consideration of solar-ready roofs and whether the committee reports its findings back to town meeting. The petitioner seeks a joint committee comprised of members to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen and the Building Commission to examine solar-ready roofs, while the advisory committee recommendation calls on the Building Commission itself to establish its own committee to study the cost and benefits of solar readiness program. Nothing in this article prohibits the Building Commission from appointing members of the public to assist the commission in this task if they feel such appointments are required. Some of the work of this committee has already been started by the staff of the Building Department. They are planning in the plans to implement Article 3.7.2, or Bylaw 3.7.2, which is Project Procedures of the Town's Bylaws. This bylaw entrusts the Building Commission with the evaluation of all projects to be built with the requirement that the Building Commission incorporate appropriate green considerations. Currently, there are five town-owned properties that have been identified by a town-hired consultant as part of the MAPC Solar Initiative as being appropriate for solar voltaic panels. Our Building Commissioner, Dan Bennett, in a recent memo to the town administrator, cited that he believes solar voltaic panel installations can be investigated in conjunction with the town's roof replacement program and within the capital improvement program. Our Building Commission does a great job in the oversight of the construction of buildings on behalf of the town. We see no reason to change the Building Commission's role. The advisory committee believes that the Building Commission and the staff of the Building Department should continue their role in energy conservation matters on behalf of the town. The selectmen at any time have the power to create committees and have clearly not seen the necessity to do so with respect to solar readiness. We do not believe that anything has changed. We do not see a necessity in forming another joint committee. We, in fact, believe that this work is best conducted by our Building Commission, who are already empowered to investigate alternative green energy technologies and energy efficiencies in our town-owned properties. We also believe that it is extremely important, very important, that any findings of that committee or any committee formed be reported back to this body. committee or any committee formed be reported back to this body. The Advisory Committee, by a vote of 15 to 3, recommends a yes vote on the vote offered on page 15-10. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Levitan, your referral motion really doesn't speak about the Building Commission appointing some kind of committee to study this. It's a referral to the Building Commission and a request that the Building Commission study and report back to Town Meeting.
That's correct.
Just to clarify.
That's correct. My comment was that the Building Commission has the power to ask anyone to join them in studying this matter.
Well, I suppose that's true. And Mr. Johnson, would you come forward, please? Lee Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Werner Lowey, Precinct 13, and I'm also a member of the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee, which, as you know, has endorsed this warrant article. Obviously, its focus was climate change, and after seeing what Sandy did to New York City, I think all of us appreciate more than ever that...
Just be careful how you... That's the point of personal privilege here.
In any case, I think we all appreciate that we in Brookline need to do our part in building a renewable energy infrastructure. And this study of solar readiness is a definite step in that direction. But let me talk about this in more practical terms. First, despite all the discussion about payback periods and so on, solar PV represents a potential revenue stream for the town. We should be prepared to take advantage of that when it clearly makes sense, and a study will help us do that. But do we really need another study committee? And if so, what should it look like? Let me explain why I'm supporting the petitioner and the Board of Selectmen's motion. Putting solar PV on roofs is one of a number of actions that has risen to the top as the Climate Action Committee has been drafting Brookline's new climate action plan. Because of that, I've been chairing a new citizens group that has been working to encourage installation of solar on commercial roofs. We've only been working on this for several months, but all of our research shows absolutely that solar is becoming more and more attractive economically. So then why don't we see more of it? Well, there's no question in my mind that the technology works and that the economics work, but all the details can be very complicated. But let me make an analogy. None of us, as of yet, have much experience with solar. Think about the decision that you would face if you'd never bought a car before. It wouldn't be easy. If you'd never done it before, you might feel a little like a deer in the headlights. Do I buy a small car or a big car? Do I buy an expensive car with a high trade-in value? Do I buy a cheaper car and keep it longer? Do I buy an American six-cylinder? Do I buy a Japanese four-cylinder? Do I buy a European diesel? Do I buy a hybrid? Do I buy an electric? Then there's the financing. Do I take out a loan? Do I lease it? Do I pay cash? If I take out a loan, do I borrow it from the manufacturer? Do I borrow it from a bank? What about warranties? Well, nowadays, when you buy a car, you don't have to worry about a wheel falling off, but that doesn't mean it's a simple decision that doesn't require some planning. That's exactly where we are today with solar. To make the best decisions possible, we need to be prepared. We need the expertise of town staff, the Building Commission, and other experts, too. The Town Administrator, the Building Department have already taken a very big step, I believe, in joining with the MAPC Solar Initiative that Mr. Levitan talked about. And I think that will be very, very helpful, particularly if we integrate it with a study And with the approach that is proposed by the petitioner and the Board of Selectmen, there's maximum flexibility to get everyone working together on this. In summary, being solar-ready is important, and this study committee is important. Making our roofs solar-ready is going to save us time and make sure that we're prepared to do the right thing environmentally and fiscally. Solar is absolutely doable, but it's complicated, and we need a well-planned collaborative process to make sure that we're going about it in the right way. Letting the selectmen form this committee will get us the best result, and it makes a lot more sense, I believe, than asking the Building Commission to do it all. So please support the approach that the proponent and the Board of Selectmen have agreed upon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
In my day job, I'm a registered architect and a specifications consultant, more commonly known as Lee Johnson. I have also served on Brookline's Green Technology Committee. I'm speaking in favor of the main motion of this article. Every architect wants a good client. You spend a couple of years typically working together, struggling through what can be at times a very difficult process. We all want successful business relationships and successful projects. A good client is a knowledgeable client, one who knows their goals and their objectives. One of the most important objectives in a building project is selecting your energy source. In the past, this was relatively easy. One of my earliest clients had, we had a very short discussion. We used gas. The client was Connecticut Natural Gas. I suspect their discussion process has not gotten any longer. More recently, I've been writing specifications for projects where we prepare the building for solar, for PV arrays. This is not a complicated process. It does involve putting in a slightly better roof, putting in some conduit. Oil, gas, geothermal, wind, and solar are now all on the table for discussion. Making the decisions has become more complex. We, the client, the town of Brookline, should be informed, knowledgeable, and prepared for a discussion on solar energy. This warrant article is not a mandate to go solar, but an opportunity to become a better client, ultimately developing the best building projects we can all be very proud of. I urge you to vote yes on the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one, no one else that's signed up to speak. Ms. Gilman, will you be brief, please?
I'll try, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Given the pressures you're under.
Speaking, speaking on behalf of the Green Caucus, I'd like to...
Who are you?
Sorry. Jane Gilman, Precinct 3, speaking on, speaking for Green Caucus. I'd like to let Town Meeting know that we voted unanimously not to refer and unanimous support on the main motion. The reasons are because this is exactly the kind of proactive initiative that our town should engage in. It gives us the most flexibility going forward when we know what we're dealing with. It is fiscally responsible to know our options upfront, and I'd like to add that the reason for a joint committee is to pull in experts from other parts of town and especially school committee, which does their own building scenario, and they should be part of this process. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion at the bottom of page 15-6...
I'd like to have a recorded electronic vote on the motion to refer.
Well, if there, on the motion to refer, okay, quite correct that we'll take the motion to refer before we get to the main motion. If there are 35 Town Meeting members that want a recorded vote, we'll have one. There are 35. This is Article 15 AC referral. A-C referral. A, this is the motion on page 15-10 that Mr. Levitan described. If you're in favor of the motion, you'll press 1. If you're against it, you'll press 2. And if you abstain or are voting present, you'll press 3. Anytime you're ready with the, for the voting period. Five seconds. Okay, the voting period is over. The motion fails by a vote of 26 in favor, 149 against, and four abstentions. On the main motion on page 15-6, those in favor, please raise your hands. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 16 in our last substantive article. The motion under Article 16 is that of the petitioner, and it's found on page 16-4, that the town adopt the following resolution calling on Congress to end the war in Afghanistan, reduce the military budget, and bring our troops and tax dollars home. Over to the middle of page 16-8, and there, since this motion was drafted before the election, there are some blanks that need to be filled in the middle of the page on page 16-5, and I'm delighted to fill those blanks. U.S. Senator hyphen-elect Elizabeth Warren and U.S. Representative hyphen-elect Joseph Kennedy III. Motion is by Ms. Connors and seconded by Ms. Nabel. Ms. Connors?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patricia Connors from Precinct 3. On behalf of Mass-Ocupied Brookline, Precinct 15 Town Meeting Member, Kaya Vanderzale and I bring this warrant article to ask you to call on our congressional representatives to take leadership to end our war in Afghanistan, reduce the military budget, and bring our troops and tax dollars home. Brookline PACS and the Boston Chapter of the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom endorse this resolution. Presently, 67,000 American troops serve in Afghanistan in our war that has dragged on inexorably and endlessly for more than 11 years. Lives are lost daily in horrific ways from IEDs, suicide bombings, insider killings, drone attacks, week after week, month after month, year after year. And yet, our war infrequently enters into our conversation. Many say it's because we don't have a draft. Others say that we really don't know why we're fighting there, but we'll leave it up to our leaders, who must know more than we do. However, the story of our leaders keeps changing, from "we must defeat Al Qaeda" to "we must defeat the Taliban" to "we must train the Afghans to defeat the Taliban." As Joe Biden said in the vice presidential debate, "It's time for the Afghans to step up." And in increasing numbers, the Afghans are stepping up, stepping up to kill NATO troops. As the mother of one such killed soldier said in a recent CBS News report, "They don't want us there." As Town Meeting Members, you are the elected representatives of the 58,000 good people of Brookline. This is your opportunity to tell Senator Kerry, Senator-elect Warren, and U.S. Representative-elect Joe Kennedy, on behalf of your 58,000 constituents, we don't want the killing, we don't want the injuries, we don't want the psychological trauma, we don't want the cost, and we want you to stop funding this war. Furthermore, we want you to substantially reduce the bloated military budget and start using some of this money instead to address our needs at home, such as education, jobs, energy, the protection of our environment rather than its destruction, and the reduction of our national debt. And we want you to take care of our veterans, our vets with amputations, our traumatic brain injuries from the blast of improvised explosive devices, our vets, many of whom have served multiple tours of duty in Iraq and/or Afghanistan, who need help adjusting to civilian life. Give them the medical care they need and deserve and help them get decent jobs. Finally, to make sure everyone gets our message, we want to notify President Obama, Secretary of State Clinton...
You have one minute.
Secretary of Defense Panetta, Governor Deval Patrick, our entire Massachusetts Congressional delegation, as well as the media, of this resolution. I urge you, gentle people, to send this message to those in our government who keep this war going, that it's time to stop, it's time to end this war, it's time now for peace. Vote yes on Article 16.
Thank you, Mr. Margolis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Margolis, Precinct 7. This is a well-intentioned, but I suggest ill-considered, resolution. I, I, there's only one part of it, really, that I have serious problems with, and that's the idea of cutting off funding for the war immediately. First of all, we all know that's not going to happen. It's, it's, as a matter, practically and politically, it's absolutely impossible. But I'd like to speak for a moment for some millions of people in Afghanistan who have depended on us. They are people who threw in their lot with us. They are people who thought that we could help them bring a more decent and just society to their country. They are minorities. They are Shia. They are Hazara. They are Sufi Muslims who oppose the brutality of the Taliban. I'm sure that when this motion was proposed, no one thought that the Taliban would stop a bus and target a 14-year-old girl whose crime was going to school and try to kill her. But they did. Those are some of the people that we have been fighting against. Have we done a good job of it? No. Are our allies pure? No. Many of them are supremely corrupt. Many of them are brutal. Some of our people have committed crimes that are as brutal as many of those of the Taliban, but we're there. And we can't just turn our back on those people who trusted in us to try to help them, who believed that their nation could be, frankly, the kind of nation that it was as late as the 1960s, when it was a moderate, reasonably progressive nation in Central Asia. Now, I don't have a lot of hope that between now and the end of 2014, we're going to do a lot of good, but there's some hope that perhaps something more decent than a dictatorship of the Taliban can emerge in that nation. We've already cut our troop levels there by approximately 50%. The President has set a date on which American combat forces will be removed from Afghanistan. And for those of us who strongly supported the reelection of President Obama and the election of Senator-to-be Warren... election of Senator-to-be Warren and Joe Kennedy, do we really want to start a fire on the left for them at this time when there are so many issues facing them? Do we really want to be a distraction when we know perfectly well that this horrible war is, in fact, coming to an end? Not as well or as fast as we would like, but still, the end is in sight? This is a resolution that may make us feel good, but I suggest to you that it will do no good.
Bobby Nabel, for the Advisory Committee. Warrant Article 16 calls on the United States to withdraw fully from Afghanistan, not only because of the increasing toll on the lives of American soldiers and the unbudgeted financial costs, which prevent much-needed expenditure on a variety of domestic needs, but because there is little evidence after 11 years that America will be able to achieve its goals of defeating the Taliban in Afghanistan and fostering the development of a stable democratic government. An earlier version of the resolution raised questions for some Advisory Committee members about whether the call for both an immediate end to funding and immediate withdrawal of troops might endanger remaining American soldiers. Petitioners have addressed this concern in the current version of the article, which makes it clear that reduced financial support for the war should include whatever funding is needed to ensure a safe withdrawal of American troops. Minor changes in wording suggested by the Advisory Committee regarding notification to be made in the event of passage of the warrant article were incorporated into the petitioner's article. Other concerns raised by some members of the Advisory Committee were, first, the possibility of increased risks to civilians if American troops withdraw before fully preparing Afghan soldiers to take over the fight against the Taliban. And two, the possible repetition of past errors. The United States supplied arms to the Taliban in Afghanistan, enabling them to drive out the Russians. America's subsequent policy of total disengagement left the Taliban in control of much of the country and the rest under the uncertain control of a weak and corrupt government. Will a new policy of total disengagement once again put at risk U.S. interests and The Advisory Committee weighed the concerns on both sides of this issue and recommends favorable action on the amended petitioner's warrant article by a vote of 16 in favor, 1 opposed, and 3 abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Cornelia Vanderzil, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 15. I'm speaking, of course, in favor of this article, which I have been working on. I just want to remind people that it was October 7th of this year that we passed the 11th anniversary of the war in Afghanistan. And even after the drawdown of the surge of troops, we still have 68,000 troops there. And the plan for removal is only going to be in over two years. But however substantial undisclosed amounts of troops will remain after 2014 as quote-unquote "trainers," whatever that means. Two-thirds of the population of the United States now wants us to get out of Afghanistan. As Michael O'Handlon of the Brookings Institute says, "While everyone is sick of the war and most people have lowered their standards greatly compared with what we first hoped, there is little clamoring to accelerate the drawdown schedule or to leave completely after 2014." And that's what we want to address with this warrant article. Our argument has been made that Afghanistan is important to our own security. There's nothing to indicate that our continued presence in Afghanistan does anything to enhance our security, but rather, there's evidence that our continued presence and the presence of a Western occupation force serves to inflame the population and indeed threatens the security of the majority of the Afghans. Many polls have been taken of Afghans, and they feel that we should be leaving their country. Our continued presence gives the Taliban actually a reason to exist and to continue with other insurgents to attack the population. As a reminder, the Taliban was its weakest in about 2003, and they have gained somewhat. Although, again, in polling the people in Afghanistan for whatever polls they're worth, they don't particularly like the Taliban either. Our continued presence there supports a corrupt regime, on the other hand. So, the risks associated with our continued military presence is actually greatly outweighs our risks of leaving. In addition, everything, there is no military solution to the problem in Afghanistan. The only solution is a political and negotiated solution. We've joined other municipalities who have put forward similar resolutions. There are at least 25 other cities and towns that have passed this resolution. Ours resolution is based on a resolution from Philadelphia, which was backed by peace and labor groups, the Catholic Peace Fellowship, Pennsylvania Progressive Democrats of America, the Philadelphia United for Peace and Justice, Vets for Peace, and other peace groups. I am a member and a board member of the Greater Boston Physicians for Social Responsibility, and the National PSR has actually backed the withdrawal of troops as long ago as 2009, so we're coming somewhat late to this. My own chapter, Greater Boston Physicians for Social Responsibility, also supports this. United for Peace and Justice, in December of 2011, called for an immediate end to the Afghanistan and Pakistan war. And Iraq Vets Against the War have been calling for this since 2009. Recently, in October—
You have one minute.
—The New York Times had an editorial called "Time to Pack Up," which called for the speedy withdrawal of troops dictated only by the security of our troops. And this is a reversal of their position. So, also Jim McGovern and Walter B. Jones in The Washington Post in 2011 had an editorial, "The Solution to Afghanistan: Get Out." So in addition, this resolution addresses the—
Thirty seconds.
—military budget, which has become bloated in the past 10 years. We have pressing domestic needs and need to address our deficit and debt in a responsible fashion. Barney Frank has championed some of this as well in his 25% cut in the military budget. I urge your vote yes on the article as we have written it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mermell. No need to call the question. Well, do you have a comment, Mr. Levine?
I wonder if we were to withdraw—
Well, why don't you tell us who you are first, sir?
Charles Levine, still from Precinct 9, sorry. If we were to draw the bulk of our 50,000 troops, or all of them, the bulk of whom are ground forces, and thereafter, the government of Afghanistan were to ask us for assistance, we would let them know that we are very much interested in offering soft power through the State Department and perhaps special forces. If that were the case, Mr. Margolis would think it would be fine to vote for this resolution to save life and limb tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Daly.
Nancy Daly for the Board of Selectmen. We supported favorable action on this warrant article, this resolution, by a vote of 3 to 2.
Thank you, Ms. Farley.
Regina Farley, Town Meeting Member, 16. Back in '75, I took a graduate course in journalism to show you how things change. The professor referred to any situation where nobody knew where it was and nobody cared where it was. In journalism, it was called Afghanistanism. I think the greatest isolationist in the United States now knows where Afghanistan is. That's number one. Number two, I have to thank the petitioners because there aren't many people in this room, and I'm one of them, who was here for the resolution against the Vietnam War. It was only a non-binding resolution, but it had moral dent. Tonight, I've listened to discussions on recycling, on all kinds of environmental issues, and we've been told that we shouldn't feel alone because 100 communities have already done it, et cetera, et cetera. We were, I believe, the second town community in the United States to oppose the Vietnam War. We were visionary. I urge the town meeting not to regard this resolution as meaningless or toothless. It has moral dent, and I support it.
Thank you. On the motion on page 16-4, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion carries by a majority vote. A couple of additional things I want to bring to your attention. In Article 17, there are three reports that I commend to your attention, from the Dukakis Recognition Commission, from the Moderators Committee on Public Hearings, and from the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee. Finally, I'd like to thank our technology experts who have shepherded us through our in particular, Mark Vanderzil, who mans the audiovisual booth, and David Marcuardo, my voting administrator, and Stephanie Orsini in the back of the room from our IT department. Thank you, thank you all. I will now take a mo—
Mr. Moderator? Question? When will the printout of these marvelous new technological votes be available to those of us who care?
Soon. It's been a—
There's an expression, "next shavuot."
A small problem of coordination between the IT and town clerk, IT Department and town clerk, which we will iron out as soon as possible.
Thank you.
I will take a motion to dissolve the fall town meeting. Is there a second? Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. I declare the fall town meeting dissolved. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.